Here and I know that. I know that. Vice Chair Drew is not able to attend, but Cecilia is here representing. Councilwoman Cecilia Taylor from Menlo Park is here. So if we could have, so I'll call the meeting to order. Today, February 25th, regular meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, and if could have roll call.
Director Abrica.
Here.
Director Bert.
Here.
Director Kremen.
Here.
Director Pine.
Present.
Director Taylor.
Present.
Everyone's here.
Okay.
There Abrica. I need to drop off to take care of something in half an hour. I'll try to come back on a little bit later, but my apologies. I have to drop off after just 30 minutes.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting us know. We'll hope you'll be able to join us later. Okay. Thank you. All right. So. We can. Continue with our agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda. Unless there are any changes.
I'll make that motion, Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Hold those in favor if you could again do roll call for us.
Yes, Director Abrica.
Yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And another. Item to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2021 regular meeting. There any? Corrections or questions on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second now.
Okay, moved and seconded and if we'll.
Director Abrica.
Ah, yes.
Director Bert.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Director Taylor.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. So our next item is the public comment. And so this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the. The board and any item that it's not on the agenda. And you know, understanding we cannot engage in any. Lengthy discussions or any discussions. So Miko, do we have, have we had any requests or do we have any now?
We do not have any requests and I do not see any hands raised at this moment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So we'll continue then with the. Item number five, which is the executive director's report. And so we'll hand that over to Margaret, Ms. Bruce, to. Inform us on this.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Abrica, and thank you everyone for joining us today. The month of February marks a, an important milestone. As we have been doing community outreach about our, the status of our projects. It's been an opportunity to let the community know and remind them of the importance of the work of the JPA. 23 years ago, there was the flood of record that impacted thousands of people and thousands of properties in Menlo Park, Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. And it was the genesis, of course, of this organization and the work that this organization has conducted over the last 23 years. Or the last. 20 of those years. Kevin Murray has been instrumental in the success of this organization. And the milestone that I would like to most acknowledge and recognize today are the significant contributions of Kevin Murray. So Kevin joined the JPA in February of 2001. I think there have been a few comments about the JPA not adhering to child labor laws back in the day, but it began a long time ago. And since then. Kevin has been instrumental, not only in project management, but in the first few years of the organization was instrumental in laying the groundwork for the agency's operations. It goes without saying that Kevin's knowledge of and passion for the creek and watershed have been instrumental in educating staff. Innumerable elected officials and regulatory agency officials and others, members of the media and the public for the past 20 years. Kevin's tours of the creek and the Safer Bay project are eloquent, informative, and have inspired everyone who has enjoyed them. Kevin's always found ways of improving everything that we do. And that includes the habitat and our relationships across the community with our agency partners, with the regulatory agency staff, among member agency staff and colleagues. Kevin's leadership and unique attentiveness and ability to collaborate has helped build bridges everywhere he goes to the benefit of all inhabitants of the creek and the watershed. So today, Kevin, we are honoring you. We want to thank you and congratulate you and honor you for your extraordinary work these past 20 years. And we look forward to many, many more. This is just the first 20. There are a few folks in the audience and there are a few organizations who have sent special commendations. There may be some folks in the audience who will want to say something after my brief remarks here, including, I think we have a representative from Congresswoman Anna Eshu's office. In the audience today who may want to chime in. We have a recognition from her office as well as the offices of Assemblymember Mark Berman and State Senator Josh Becker. From Valley Waters Board of Directors. From the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. From the city of Palo Alto. From the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. From our partners at Grassroots Ecology. And at Stanford University. And there is a special gift from the board and staff to Kevin of the local artist Linda, Linda Gass. In her artwork depicting various aspects of the natural elements of our community, including the bay margin and the, I know the shoreline that Kevin holds so dear. So that will be, that is a special gift that Kevin will have. Other recognitions are still coming in just because of the schedules of board meetings and when those things get passed, some of them are still on their way. So. There are many more to come. This is just the start, I think. And thank you, Kevin, for 20 years of exemplary service and leadership and many more.
Yes, well, thank you for that. Not, not a surprise. Well, maybe it is a surprise in that. Maybe Kevin didn't know he was going to be getting all these recognitions well, well deserved. I know that in East Palo Alto, we did pass also a proclamation. Last week, we did adopt it already. And. I think, as you mentioned there, there's probably other ones coming. But let me offer first an opportunity for board members that wish to share something. About Kevin and then, then I will open it up for the public to make. You know, additional comments, but. Anybody on the board want to? Share something now or later, but I'll start with you on the board.
I mean, I'd like to through the chair. I mean, I don't, you know, without Kevin, this project would not, well, it wouldn't actually be in place. Let's be honest. Throughout the complexity. He's kind of our knowledge bank, kind of irreplaceable. I would say we don't pay him enough, but I better shut up right now. So congratulations on your anniversary. I know through Valley Water and myself, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else like to?
Yes. Chair Abrica?
Yes.
Hi, this is Pat. I'd, I'd just like to, I'd like to add my appreciation to Kevin. It's, it's. I've had the pleasure of working with him for the better part of the last dozen years and he just continues to. Be a consummate professional and continues to understand more and more about. The intricacies of the, the project and, and, and I just don't think we'd be where we are without him. So thank you very much, Kevin.
Yeah, okay.
Chair Abrica.
Yes.
Dave. I would just add, I really enjoyed seeing the photos different, at different times. Kevin's career, but the one I really liked the most was towards the end where Kevin is there looking over the new. Flood control improvements in the Beta 101 stretch. Now that was really a remarkable accomplishment that, you know, those of us on the board know just the type of perseverance and. Patience and attention to detail required to make that happen. And you know, Kevin was in the, in the middle of every step of the way. And should look, I know, look, we, we look back with great pride at what he's accomplished and thank him. For, for helping this small organization achieve so much.
Yes. Cecilia, you want to say anything? I know there, you're serving as the alternate, but any.
Yes, and, and thank you. And I actually had the, the pleasure, I was given a tour. Both Mayor Combs and I, so that was the last time, actually the first and last time that I've met you and, and congratulations on your service to the JPA and, and I appreciate your time.
Yeah. Yeah, well, Kevin, I do want to say too that you're definitely. You know, a very strong pillar of the JPA. Definitely a lot of good work, a lot of continuity and. I think over the years, all the things that we, we have gone through. I've always felt that. You know, you, you always, number one, you always remain calm, no matter what the question, what the issue, or what the controversy, or what the request is. And you're very thorough and you're. I think, understanding and informing the board and the public and. If need be, you go and do additional research. And I think one of the things that came up, I think you're, you've contributed a lot to sort of keeping communications open with all different stakeholders. So thank you very much. And. Yeah, you still look very young. Those pictures, I, I know you were young then, but you know, hang in there. Thank you. And. So I do want to open up for the public. I know we do have a good number of people. I would ask if possible, maybe keep your comments, you know, to a minute or two. We usually allow three minutes, but. You know, if need be, you can take more, but you know, we can, we can go with that. And so I'll. Yeah, if Margaret or Miko, you want to start sort of calling people, I guess, who requested.
Okay, so Len has his hand raised first. We'll go with Len.
Hi, Len.
Okay, hi, hi, everybody. I'm not sure if you can see me or hear me, but I hope so. Okay. Great. So I'll keep this super brief, but. You know, I worked with Kevin for almost 12 years and. You know, as was said by, by many other people, the complexity of the projects was, was just huge. And the continuity, as Chair Abrica just said, the continuity was such an important part to understand the history and understand the players. And understand the technical issues. And Kevin really just brought it all together. And the hardest part of these projects, I think, at least the one that we went through is the permitting challenges and the, just the immense complexity. And the need to, to be able to work with multiple agencies in a sophisticated way and a discreet way that they trust and trust us and that they had, that we had credibility with them. And Kevin was just in charge of that and absolutely kind of ran with it. And it took a long time, but the success was all his. So congratulations to him. And thanks, Kevin, for all the important work that you did for the agency and for me personally, to give me a good understanding and, and enable the board. To be so cohesive and focused and supportive of our work. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Len. Linda, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would like to. So congratulations, Kevin, and I, I just really wonderful accomplishments that you've done over the past 20 years. And I love that your colleagues have chosen this artwork about wetlands restoration as a gift for you. Wetlands are so essential to the health of our ecosystems. And I like to think of that as a metaphor for the essential nature of the work that you've done for the SFC JPA. And I hope that in the 20 years that you've seen many of your dreams for the watershed come true. So congratulations.
Thank you, Linda. Jeff.
So on behalf of the Office of Emergency Services, we really do want to thank Kevin Murray for all the efforts that he's put in. He's been the constant anchor. When it, whether it was knowing the watershed, knowing the rain gauges, knowing the down creek flow, we always knew that there was one person we could reach out to. It was always Kevin. He knew every step of the way. And he has been a great partner for us here at the Office of Emergency Services. We thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Joe Terese?
Hey, Kevin, how's it going? My name is Joe Terese. I worked for over, over 30 years at the city of Palo Alto and spent 15 years working as a partner with Kevin and the JPA. So when I heard about this opportunity to honor Kevin, I was very happy to come out of retirement to come and say some nice things about Kevin. The things that I think mostly of him is that, one is his. Incredible breadth of knowledge across all areas of environmental issues and technical issues and just having a real handle on all of the complex issues facing the creek and the watershed. Also his ability to explain things in, in a way that the layperson can understand very easily. I was also always very impressed by the way he was able to answer questions and just be not evasive, be very frank and upfront and just tell it like it is, tell the facts, tell, tell it as he sees it and to be patient. I know he's, he's probably had to answer the same questions over and over again from, from folks and always does it with a smile and with a very. Gentle manner. So I'm just very happy to be here to be able to say congratulations to Kevin on, on a fine achievement of, of achieving the. A 20 year milestone and wishing you many more years of success. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Joe. We have Nicholas from Congresswoman Anna Eshu's office.
Hi, Mr. Murray. On behalf of Congresswoman Eshu and her office, I would like to sincerely thank you for dedicating your career to serving the communities of Menlo Park, Palo Alto, East Palo Alto and beyond. And making San Francisco Creek a part of our life. It's an honor to be part of the celebration today and I hope you enjoy.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else from the public or staff like to speak?
This is Jerry Hearn. May I speak?
Yes, please, Jerry.
Thank you, Kevin. I already sent in a letter on behalf of Grassroots as the board chair, but I want to say a couple of personal things to you. First of all. We've been at it together here for 20 years and it's just been a pleasure all the way along. And I want to echo something that Joe said, your willingness to engage in conversations and share information, sometimes that was challenging. And you were always straightforward and right there and it made it a lot easier to deal with things, knowing that you were honest and truthful. And I really appreciate that. What I really liked too was the time that we got to spend in the creek together. You're walking in the creek or working in the creek or talking about projects. That was really very important. So I'm sure we'll keep on doing this for maybe another 20 years. Who knows? But I really appreciate your friendship and your shared passion for, for the creek that, that you and I share. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Bill Springer.
Hi, Kevin. Nice to see you again after this morning's discussion. I just want to say how much I appreciate your collaborative nature, that you are so willing and so able to work with so many diverse people, including the Santa Clara Valley Water District. Jerry and Joe and I have been with you for quite a while. I remember when you got hired by Cynthia DiGosta. And I just want to say it's been a joy to know you for all that time. Thank you very much for your friendship, Kevin, and I really appreciate you. Bye bye.
Thank you, Bill. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands.
Well, let me, let me just say. Kevin, we, we owe you a big cake. Lots of drinks as soon as we can, but in the meantime, I, I would ask you perhaps maybe to say a few words.
Sure.
I'm sorry, can I, can I interrupt you for a moment, Kevin? On, on behalf of staff, I would like to take a moment to speak. Thank you.
Do that first.
Okay, um, Kevin, Margaret, Tess and I want to thank you for all of your contributions, not only as a coworker here at the JPA, but just for being who you are. I've been in this with you for a number of years. I can attest to your patience, your knowledge, your skill and everything. So I just want to say thank you so much. We appreciate you. And here's to another 20 more.
Okay, Miko, well said. So, okay, now Kevin, share a few.
Yeah, thank you, Miko, and thank you to everyone who commented. I really appreciate it. I, I didn't know that we were doing this today, so I didn't prepare anything. I wondered why Margaret didn't ask me to review her slides before the presentation. Now I know why. My family came in and joined me. They brought all the proclamations that you went over at the beginning. So, so thank you very much. I, I will cherish these. This is, this is really. This is monumental to me. So thank you. Want to share the artwork? Yeah, so. Can see we've brought the artwork in. Thank you very much, Leila, for that, for that, and for your kind words. I appreciate it. And. You know, this, this creek and watershed is a very special place and I didn't expect to be here 20 years, but there's something captivating about. The natural resource and the people and everyone that I've worked with. And I'm just so happy that I had the opportunity to learn from so many people. A lot of really talented professionals and a broad diversity of, of disciplines. And I've been happy to be the, the continuity for these projects. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, thank your family for. Also being there with you and stuff.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Much appreciated.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll come back to. Margaret and we'll continue with the reports or any other.
It's a little, it's a little bit difficult to keep secrets in a public institution. So I am delighted that we managed to keep the cat in. In the bag as long as we did. And yeah, that was a little bit challenging. Thank you, everyone, for contributing to the surprise. So moving along, milestones and events were up on the executive director's report. We have had one of two successful community. Project update meetings on Tuesday evening from five to a little bit after six o'clock. We hosted approximately 97 attendees from the community who joined us for. A presentation where we provided a brief update on the status of the Reach Two or Upstream project. There was a robust Q and A session. The recording of that presentation and the Q and A discussion will be posted on the website in the next couple of days. We are also going to do a summary of the questions and answers in a document form that we'll also post on the website. Our 10th and 15th trees, as we are aware that there are a number of members of the community who are particularly interested in the impacts to the trees along the Riparian Corridor. So again, that one will have a Q and A session. The whole thing will be recorded. Recording, documenting. And for feedback, survey, survey, asking for public how that first community meeting went. And the initial replies that we've gotten, we've gotten a little bit over 25 replies so far, is very positive. And the comments that we've received have been very illuminating. I'll send the board a little bit of a, a report after these two events are concluded. To give some of the community feedback that we've gotten. The overall response is very positive. So going on with executive director's report and project updates. I'm going to touch on these lightly. Just you have the, the more fulsome description in your. Board packet materials. So we'll touch on these lightly and pause if anyone has any questions. So for the Reach Two Upstream project, working with our colleagues at Valley Water, there's been an update to the project cost estimate. This has been about, the, the previous cost estimate was more than a year, perhaps a year and a half old. The current estimate is a $38 million total price tag. The funding gap update, the most optimistic gap is somewhere between five and a half and $6 million. And the most conservative gap. Or pessimistic view, if you will, is around $23 million. That hasn't changed a whole lot, even though the price tag for the project has increased. Work on regulatory permitting continues of, of most particular priority is the lead analysis. We are also working closely with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to continue the CAP 205 work. Both of these conversations, discussions about the lead analysis and cost benefit analyses for the CAP 205 process, among others, including. Project neighbors considerations are driving additional discussion and consideration of some modifications to our channel widening approach. We don't have very much information for you yet, but we will. Possibly by the next board meeting to share some more hydrological. Both that will reduce costs and that will potentially reduce impacts to project neighbors. In Reach Three, in the 100 Year Flood Protection Evaluation of Detention Basins, we have, as you know, retained Woodard and Kern. And we had a very productive kickoff meeting on the second of February. The next steps for that process are to clarify some of the logistical requirements for working in Stanford's lands. And I think we are, we are working. A pace to clarify what the logistical requirements are that is proceeding as planned. Safer Bay project, waiting for FEMA's evaluation of our $50 million FEMA CALOES Brick Grant Application. And of most particular good news, our urban flood grant application has been progressed to the second step, which means that they asked for a site visit. During COVID, we can't do a physical site visit. So Tess hosted a very successful virtual site visit where many supportive community members were present and showed their support for the project. And. The applicant, the review team for, for this was very complimentary of our virtual site visit. So our organization and admin update is, is a pretty brief one, although it's a momentous item. The audit for fiscal year 1920 is complete and that is on your agenda as a consent item today. The, there's also a consent item for a CalPERS social security resolution. And that is, both of these are largely administrative or ministerial. And I think. That is the end of my, my director's report.
Yeah, so let me then see if there are any questions from the board, any, on any of the. Items reviewed. And just jump in if you have a question. Are there any requests from the public to speak on any? An item five?
Don't see any requests to speak.
Okay. Okay, well then, we'll continue with consent agenda. We do have two items and are there any requests to pull, pull either one for further discussion? And are there any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Nico, no.
No.
All right. Thank you for checking. So, so then if I could have a motion to approve the consent calendar, the consent agenda with those two items.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Pat and let's, let's have a vote on that then.
Director Abrika.
Uh, yes.
Director Burt.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Affirmative, yes.
Director Pine. I think he's already stepped out. And Director Taylor.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. And yeah, our next section, under action items, potentially, you know, there's some things we need to at least give direction or take action. We've had this before, the earning warning system. And there were some questions and requests for additional information. So now we'll get an update on that and and, and see what we want to do. Yeah.
Okay. So as you read in your packet, this issue has evolved over the last several months. And as you may recall, some months ago, Director Kremen brought forward the question of are there particular issues around liability or functionality or other considerations about the flood early warning system? So his questions prompted us to do some closer looking at the status of the system itself. And at the same time, there was communication from the web hosting service, the Connectria service that hosts this website for us, that there are a number of updates that were necessary to the operating system for the, for this website. We were at a juncture of needing to decide how we wanted to do those updates, how we wanted to structure those updates and the timing of them, and what things we wanted to update. That also sparked a conversation, again, thanks to Director Kremen's questions, about is there, are all of the functions of this early warning system still right and appropriate for the JPA to, to carry on with? And the question has arisen, is the part around the community notification, the phone calls and text messages and emails that are the automated part of the public warning system in the event of a flood, are those still the best role and responsibility for the JPA? When this part of the system was set up, it was absolutely leading edge. There wasn't anything else like it that could provide our community members and our emergency operations colleagues this kind of early warning. However, in the years since then, the local communities have identified and begun using the alert system in San Mateo County, it's SMC Alert, it's Alert Santa Clara County and the other side. This is a third-party provider that is very robust, used widely across the state and is very well resourced. These, these county warning systems speak to one another. There's collaboration and coordination so that people on one side of the creek or in one side of the county can speak to those on opposite sides or in other counties. Our system isn't quite so flexible. And in fact, what is now in place in these other alert systems eclipses the, what was once state-of-the-art and is now not as state-of-the-art as these other systems are. So we are both redundant and not as robust as the other systems are. So because there is an investment necessary in updating and maintaining the operating systems and components of this website for security reasons, it's important to decide which parts we want to keep and which parts we want to save. My recommendation, after looking at what's available in the other counties, consulting with Mr. Norris in San Mateo County and Chief Duker in Palo Alto, there is recommendation consensus that if we divested ourselves of just this piece of the community warning component, that we can let others do that part and we handle the part that we do the best. And that is promoting to the community the knowledge about the condition of the creek, enabling our emergency response colleagues to know what the status of the creek is and utilize Kevin's in particular, but utilizing our understanding of the watershed and its functions and maintaining that component of our, all of those components of our early warning system would be the most prudent investment to maintain at this time. And, and that would conclude my, my presentation on this point. And what I would be looking for is your direction and potential concurrence with my recommendation that just the component of alerting community members is something we divest ourselves of.
Okay, well, let's see, you know, clarifying questions or yes, anybody on the board want to jump in? Comments or questions? Yes, Pat, I think, yeah, just go ahead. I think I saw you.
Thank you. So that, that sounds logical and, and I, I certainly do recollect when we were pushing for this. Before we had a downstream project that, that many of us were concerned. Okay, while we put that project together, how do we make sure that we mitigate any remaining risks if a flood should occur? And, and I just want to commend everybody who was involved with putting this together. So there have been different times where the integration of our data, our early warning information that we have compiled didn't seem to be completely aligned with our city website and I don't know about with the other county and things. And I don't know whether Chief Duker, who I was on the call earlier, if, if he can talk to that or Margaret can of just how seamless are we today in integrating the, the data collection that we have with the ability to use our partners to transmit it?
I would, Chief Duker, if you, I noticed that you've unmuted yourself. If you have comment there, that would be appropriate at this time.
Sure. Margaret, I'll first defer to you and I would like Jeff Norris on the other side to speak about to Pat Bird's point about the seamless part, the sensor integration. I'm going to defer to Jeff Norris and/or others on the call. But I could say to answer the question directly that you're correct, sir, that we, we both sides of the creek, as it were, that the two counties have deployed our respective massive learning systems. The, there are a number of other things I won't go in the weeds on that have been greatly improved with regard to pre-planning and mapping for use by first responder agencies. So those of us who, who have emergency operation centers and, and/or 911 centers. So I think that the, the JPA's action is well advised, in my opinion. But with permission, if we could have Jeff Norris chime in from his side.
Well, thank you, Chief Duker. We work very, very well together, though we are two counties and multiple cities and we, we share a common border. And Chief Duker and I have worked together on many, many projects in the past. This one is for us very easy. We've both spoken with Director Bruce and we both know that we've all come to the conclusion that when your gauges indicate that there is a hazard to the community, it's little more than a phone call and that message will be available to the community. Our system on, on our side of the creek, right now, we have 110,000 subscribers. We have over 300,000 landline phones in the system. Plus, we have a number of other tools that we can use to reach those communities. If an area was identified at risk, we could notify it and notify it very, very quickly. So I agree with the Chief Duker. It is an exceptional idea and it is something that we can very, very well do going forward.
And Chair Abrika, I would add that we would proceed, i- if, if it is the board's will to do so, we would proceed with a clear memorandum of understanding between the JPA and our partner organizations for encouraging our, the existing subscribers to go to their respective counties or both counties to register and for how we will continue to collaborate and communicate in the event of emergencies.
Yes, yeah, that sounds like a good needed step and a good conclusion to this project up to now. Any other board member have any questions or this? Sounds like, any requests from the public on this, Nico?
I have not received any and I don't see any requests to speak.
Okay. Yeah, so I just I'll reminisce a little bit. I think Pat was reminding me of that event in 2012 where there was some flooding that took place in East Palo Alto. And it almost happened in other places. And I think that was the time, around that time that we got more involved because I clearly remember being on West Bay Shore and the creek, close to 6:00 PM, watching the creek level was very, very high, almost to the top. And there were several people coming and going, I think, from all our different jurisdictions, checking, you know, everybody was checking, visually checking. And the storm had already kind of subsided, at least in the flatlands. And I just remember hearing, and I'm not sure who it was, I think some people from Valley Water might have been, I think even some of our own public works kind of saying, yeah, it looks like the storm's over. And within 30 to 45 minutes, you know, I got a call, we got a call, there had been a break down in East Palo Alto, right across that. Why? Because apparently there were this huge cloud just sitting on top of the mountains, delivering water for, I don't know how long. It just took time for that water to get downstream and flood, you know? And so I think that was the, the impetus in part to, to say, you know, if there was a way in which we could at least alert people downstream that maybe within an hour, and I forget, I think there were estimates so that, that maybe it could get up to like one hour warning. Is, is that the case now? I'm, I'm just trying to currently now, let's say there was a big event, about how much time would there be in warning?
I would like Kevin to speak to that if he does not.
So our system gives a flow rate that is about an hour and 45 minutes upstream of first potential breakout point at Pocotawas or I see. Street Bridge.
Right.
And it's about two hours from East Palo Alto.
Yeah, okay, good. Yes, all right. In any event, I think it served this purpose and it's good to hear that now with all the improvements, definitely communication wise and, and technically that we are able to give those warnings and we can play a reduced role. So, yeah, I also want to just thank everyone over the years for having worked on this and and I think in the transition period, you know, right now, we're not facing storms, I, I guess, but who knows, you know, these days, anything can happen. But I think we'll go, there'll be a period of, I think, communication, letting people know, goes up to now. In some ways, I think the public has gotten used to the idea that they could check with us in a way, right, for that. But just transitioning more to letting people know that there will be notifications and that will have a reduced role. But yeah, it all sounds very good. Thank you, everyone, for, for bringing us up to date and Director Kramer for having brought that up in a timely way, because it was time to look at this. So that's good. Yeah, any other? So that, the Margaret, that, I don't know, should we wait until we get an MOU actually drafted and presented to take action? Or, or at least give you direction that we are in accord with your recommendation?
If that's how you would like to proceed, that seems quite fine. I will go ahead with your direction to produce an MOU. I will do so collaboratively with Chief Duker and Mr. Norris, and we will bring something forward possibly in March.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would, we could do that. All right. Hey, all right, well, thank you, everyone. And thank you. Okay, all right, so we'll continue with the other item that we have.
Item seven B.
Oh, yes.
This has to do with the committees of the board and Chair Abrika, this was your item.
Well, you know, I just wanted to you know, just to have a quick review of the committees and then just a reminder, because the, you know, we don't have that many committees, but there's always this question of ad hogs or are there standing? And I think last time, just in the interest of time, we sort of just went quickly through them. And so I don't know if our council, is our council here? I'm sure she is.
Yes, Tricia's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, so you know, basically, I just wanted to have a quick review of what the policies that Brown Act and those things for our committees and and then see any questions, clarifications and stuff, so.
So Chair Abrika, do you want me to quickly go over the rules?
Again, you know, my, my concern is always, I think, I think we all face this, but always need reminders, you know, we have committees. So if there are the ad hoc committees, are they standing committees? If they're ad hoc committees. But regularly, do we need to advertise them, you know, publicly or not, or those kinds of things? And it's just a, a quick refresher on that point.
Sure. Under the Brown Act, if the, if the board sets, sets up a committee that's less than a quorum of the committee and it has, you know, a continue, a, a continuing subject matter jurisdiction over an issue, if it meets regularly, if it's set up by a floral action of the board, that body, when it meets, is, should be complying with the Brown Act when it meets, meaning it needs to have noticed meetings with an agenda and all the other open meeting requirements of the Brown Act. And then the Brown Act also has an exception for what has come to be known as ad hoc committees. You won't find that term in the Brown Act. But essentially, if there are committees that are set up with limited jurisdiction that are just looking at discrete matters and are comprised of less than a quorum of the board, those type of committees can get together, discuss an issue and then bring it back as kind of in an advisory capacity for the board. And so it's my understanding that this was intended to be a review of the existing committees and just kind of provide some clarity to whether these committees are standing committees or ad hoc committees.
Yeah. And so what is your understanding of that? Because I frankly have forget, you know, over the years or yeah, what are they? We have, right now, we have finance committee, personnel committee, and then emergency preparedness and response committee. So that, that's actually one of the questions I had were just, and you know, we don't have to answer now if we need to research it, just to be on the safe side and stuff, so.
And, you know, and Margaret can, you know, fill in where I might not be complete here, but it's my understanding that these, that there are several committees that were set up as, as standing committees to deal with a specific subject matter jurisdiction. However, those standing committees aren't necessarily meeting all the time. They were set up to have some ongoing discussions, but perhaps they're not, they're not meeting with frequency. And so for that, I would And so for that, I would probably defer to Margaret to kind of explain the status of these existing committees, how they're being used and, and how she views them.
Sure, and I think that the board members should also think about how they want to participate in the committees. And if there are committee topics that either need to be redacted or expanded, you know, we all adapt and change over time. And maybe the board would like to expand or add ad hoc or standing committees as they see the need for it. Right now, the committees meet fairly infrequently. There's the finance committee that has jurisdiction over all of the preliminary budget discussions, the audit, and, and that serves its function at a fairly defined period of time during the year. But it's a very high profile thing, you know, the organization's budget says a lot about its priorities and in what it invests in. And so my sense of things is that should remain a standing committee with all of the appropriate noticing. Similarly, personnel committee doesn't meet very often, but its work is, is an important element of the board's responsibility and should probably remain a standing committee and with all of the appropriate noticing. I'm not aware of, in the seven months of my tenure, the emergency preparedness meeting ever, ever meeting, which doesn't mean it doesn't have an important role, but it's not a continuous function. It's not a repeating function like personnel performance reviews or budget reviews or audit reviews would be. Perhaps the board would consider making that an ad hoc committee to address issues associated with, for example, the flood early warning system, should that arise. Maybe a task for them would be a preview of the draft MOU. But it may, it seems to me like it's more of a task related rather than a standing operational issue.
Yes, and also that one, I think, well, it's on future agenda. I think we'll, we'll have to still address the finality of our own mission that still needs revising from what it originally was, which said we were coordinating the emergency preparedness, which we really haven't. But, yes, I would, I would agree that this is probably kind of an ad hoc committee and it may remain or it may disappear depending. But, so I guess what I'm getting is, and then, you know, definitely want to have the board also, you know, comment that, that the finance and the personnel, then we are considering them as standing committees and therefore they need to be advertised, et cetera, et cetera, whether they meet regularly or not, is that? But, yeah, maybe, I think Pat, you got your hand up, or whoever else on the board wants to say, yes.
Yeah, thanks. So I would agree that the finance and the personnel committee are ongoing committees and should continue to be so, and therefore they're standing committees. The emergency preparedness committee did meet fairly regularly back in this period when we were developing the emergency preparedness program. And I would agree that it probably does not need to be a standing committee, but to make it an ad hoc committee, what I believe really would need to be done is that we, we curtail it being a committee. And at a future date, if we need to have an ad hoc committee, we then create it. But if we were to rename this as an ad hoc committee now, it's not. It's a, it's a standing committee.
Yes, I agree, yes, that makes sense, yeah. Any other comments on the board, or does that kind of make sense then, that we? We keep the two as standing and, and then the other one, we wait for now until we finalize our documents and then there'll be some interest still, but not as a committee. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so I think, are there any requests from the public on this, Nico? To speak on this?
I'm not seeing any requests to speak.
All right, well, okay, well, thank you, Tricia and Margaret, and for putting this report in. So I think, I think we're given direction then, or clarification, right?
Okay, and I will reach out to the members of that, the emergency preparedness committee for a review of the MOU prior to the next board meeting or when that's brought to the agenda. And then also, on presuming the March agenda, would you want to have an action item for consideration of the emergency preparedness committee's status?
I, yeah, I think we might as well, this, those, that, one way or the other, yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll continue. I think there's one more item. No, I think we're.
Item 8A is discussion.
The budget.
Yep, this is, this is not an action item, this is just a discussion item. The preliminary budget is based on our, in our staff consideration of the expenses and revenues that we are aware of at this time and, and the input of the finance committee that, that met and provided a few questions and, and some directions. So I'm just going to scan through these very quickly so that you see them on your screen. I'm taking this in sections. In your board packet, you will have a spreadsheet that has all of this basically on one page. It's hard to fit on a screen and still read it, so I've broken it into sections. And the first one is the revenue section. We are anticipating approximate member contributions in the range of $337,000 per member. There is no present funding for Safer Bay, Safer Bay project. However, we are keeping our fingers crossed that that may change in the next fiscal year, but we'll see. The upstream project, sorry, need to adjust my screen. Also, for the coming fiscal year, there is no anticipated income for that project. Interest income is in the range of $3,500 for total revenues of $1.689 million in revenues. Moving on to the next section, which is the personnel costs. We are proposing tentatively the following numbers, executive director salary, ED transportation allowance, finance manager, senior program manager, both, a cost of living increase, employee benefits, membership dues, payroll administration fees and employer taxes are all that. This is the sum total of what we're proposing preliminarily. Going to the membership dues, this is a category that has increased somewhat significantly. As you may be aware, we receive a lot of our insurance coverage, whether it's disability insurance, workers' comp insurance, et cetera, from our Aqua JPIA membership. And the cost of that membership has increased substantially for the coming year. This is our estimate for contract services, legal counsel, auditor, project consultants. One time upstream of Highway 101 project expenses. Note that there's a footnote there and we'll come back to that in a few slides. The Reach 2EIR addendum, CAP 205 and O N M. So for legal counsel, it's slightly less than the current year's expenditures because we anticipate that the secret challenge will be resolved. And knock wood, there won't be any additional extraordinary legal expenses. So this will be the maintenance cost for our legal counsel. We have one more year in our auditor's contract and this is the fixed amount for that. Project consultants include a wide range of general project support. The number has increased in part because we are looking at a need to do a labor compliance program, labor, I think it's labor wage compliance, compliance program. And that is a significant third-party consultant provision. So when we implement Safer Bay, we are absolutely going to need to comply with those requirements and have such a program in place. The footnote that I wanted to mention, the one time upstream of Highway 101 project expenses, this is a carryover of the unspent allocation from last year. So if, if you have a question, I think Nico can probably explain that a little bit better than I can. The Reach 2EIR addendum or supplement is estimated at $50,000 and that is if we need to do, based on our hydrological analysis, if we need to do some additional clarification of our channel widening work that may result in a shift of approach from one side of the creek to the other in, in one or more places. Again, it's not a significant change in any way from our current approved preferred alternative, it is a small tweak. CAP 205 is $160,000. There is our portion of getting the Army Corps of Engineers started on their environmental and engineering work so that the next phase of the project can be determined to whether or not it's effective or, you know, cost-effective and viable. This is our marker, if you will, our front money for them to be able to conduct that analysis. What this would get us is a determination of whether or not their funding of, I think it's close to $10 million for the channel widening work would be viable for the Army Corps of Engineers to provide. If there are any questions about particularly the CAP 205 process, I would defer those to Kevin. O N M estimate is for our ongoing operations and maintenance of the downstream project mitigation activities. And the administrative side, computers and software, meeting supplies, travel and training, office supplies, telecommunications, IT, postage, printing and design, website, liability insurance, office lease, utilities, office furniture and maintenance. These are all the categories that you're probably already familiar with. A couple of notable changes are in the computers and software. We have need for a couple of new laptops. And for software, we have need for making sure that we all have, that there are a sufficient number of redundant licenses so that if any one of us, as I like to say, happens to get hit by a bus, the organization is not hamstrung in any way. On the office lease side, that number is different than you've seen in the past because in the past, in our form release, many of the expenses that we had under the utilities column and others, including IT and telecommunications, not part of our office lease. Our current office lease includes those. Our current office has, we have phones, we have Wi-Fi, we have janitorial, we have a number of other benefits associated with the office space. Those, some costs are reduced and the office lease cost is increased, but on balance, it's about the same as, as, as previous years. And, and this is the wrap-up, general contingency of $35,000 total expenses. And this budget also includes the addition of a 15% reserve as approved by the board last November. I'll leave it at that if the board has any questions.
Okay, yeah, we'll open it up for board questions at this point. Anyone just jump in? And this is a preliminary budget, but a good indication.
Right.
Anybody? Okay, not hearing anyone. Are there any requests from the public on this item?
Jerry Hearn?
Yeah, I have a request, thank you. Kevin, this probably goes to you, with CAP 205, as you well know, we've struggled with Corps of Engineer timelines. They tend to just keep going and going and going. Is there a timeline on this project and does it match up with, with our timeline for doing that reach? Or is it, is it reimbursable? Can you use monies that you get afterwards to pay back money we've expended for that? Yeah, if you happen to know that.
Yeah, the CAP 205 is currently on a three-year schedule and that would be three years to construction. That is why we would spread our, our contributions over about, over a three-year, three-year period. And there, there are some assurances in this program that safeguard against the type of slippage that we'd seen in previous years. First of all, the, the staff at the San Francisco District would not be dependent upon a federal appropriation each year to fund their work. That's a discretionary expense of the San Francisco District. So having too little money to do the work is, shouldn't be the same problem as it was in the past. And all of the work is done in-house, so there's not kind of the vertical review of all the elements that we saw. There is, I mean, there is headquarter review when we get to a project, but there's not the vertical review of every little tiki-taki detail of.
Yeah.
So, yes, it should go much faster. That's the, that's the reason for the program and why we're looking at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, just looking, I'm just thinking of the past and thank you for answering that. I'm just hoping that money is dependable.
Yeah.
Yeah, good question. At, at this time and from what Kevin has told me and from my interactions with Jamie O'Halloran at, at the Army Corps, it does seem dependable. Again, there is still this preliminary analysis that needs to be done before it's really certain. But it seems they are very engaged, they're very responsive. It's clear they want to see this project come to fruition and be our partners in that. So it's, I feel optimistic about it.
That's, that's very good news because, yeah, it's a significant amount of money. So thank you for your answers.
Thanks for the question, Jerry, appreciate it.
Any other requests or comments from board members or public? Not, if not, we can.
I see no more requests.
Continue on?
Okay.
Yes, so let's go on then to item number nine and that's, any more member with any comments or announcements or requests? Anyway. So let me make just a quick, something I've been thinking about this past month. And, you know, maybe we can put it on the agenda for discussion. But I've been thinking it might be good to have a, kind of a board strategic planning session. We already do have a working, work plan that I think, you know, Margaret presented sort of all the things that need to be done in, in, in a certain sequence over the next couple of years. But I'm just feeling like it might be good for us to, to kind of regroup and, and focus and see where we want to land. And, you know, this year, there are certain challenges. Obviously, I think we made progress, but, so I think that either the March or April meeting, you know, if people are able to stay a little longer, we could build in, say, I think, maybe an hour and also offer an opportunity for the public to, to jump in. So does that, anybody have any comments on that, what you think to consider that?
Chair Abrika, if I may ask clarifying question, are you looking for something like a study session?
Well, I'm calling it sort of strategic planning for the board, which is not, is not really to, is really more for us to kind of dialogue over the things that we already have in motion and kind of maybe focus ourselves. So, you know, we could call it a study session, but, yeah.
And Chair, I don't know how many years it's been since we've had one of those essentially, whether we call it a retreat or, yeah. And, and as I recall, we might have had the last one that I was involved with within was maybe on a Saturday morning. It really does. It really does get a chance for us to step back and look at longer term strategic planning, even though we're, you know, doing elements of that right now. I guess my question would be, I think it's a good concept. What are the, the high level issues that you're thinking we should be considering? Or need to have dialogue about?
Yeah. So frankly, no, I, I wanted to this. I've been thinking about it with no feeling more like it was time to do something like that. And, you know, I think definitely the financial situation is one strategy for that, et cetera. And as we move, you know, second reach and third reach, just sort of all the elements that go into that. Yeah, that's, you know, kind of basically my thinking, but of course, you know, whatever the board also feels are other issues that we could do that. But, you know, I, I think we might consider you know, if possible, doing it on a, on a Saturday. Also just kind of get away from the regular routine or extend the meeting, but, but maybe a Saturday might be better. Any any other thoughts on that from anybody else to, for us to consider? You know, within the next two months, I think there's, there's no big hurry, but before too much time goes by. Well, we could leave it like that for now and then I think we can explore that more and, and yes. Okay. Any other, anybody else has any announcements or comments on anything? Okay. Well, our next item is closed session and I do want to first ask if there are any any requests from the public to, for any comments on closed session. And I think, Miko, you will put us in a separate room. Is that how it works? I forget.
Correct. I'll create a breakout run for the board.
Yes. And, and also for Margaret, although I think initially we're going to start just the board member and, and then we can communicate with, with our executive director. Yes. So.
Okay. I see no public comment requests. So I'll create the board now, the room.
And you know, Director Pine has joined us yet, or he, he might be joining us. So if he does.
If he does, I will add him to the room, but I do not see him on right now.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll do that then. We'll, we'll adjourn in the closed session and then we'll come back and, and report out at some point. Thank you, everybody for your participation. And Kevin, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will it pop up as a invite on our screen?
Yeah, it, it will. Just hold on one moment, please.
Okay, good. I just, I get confused on this sometimes.
Yeah, me too.
Miko has to add everybody one at a time. So it takes a second.
Okay. We're back. The yeah, so Director Pine was, was not able to join us. If you remember, he had indicated he might be back, but I think he wasn't able to join us in closed session. So you know, at this point, I just want to report out that we did hold this session, but there is no reportable action and then we will bring this back at the next meeting to do this. Okay. And so with that, then we, we are adjourned. And thank you, everybody for joining in today. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Chair Briga. Good night, everyone.